Councilmember Green with the indication. We've got Councilmember Jones with the flags. Public hearing one, public hearing on the levy of assessments among the property within Lakeside Crossing Public Improvement District. Public hearing two, consideration ordinance granting a zone change. That's from state town home to mixed use district.
I had a question about this one, Richard. So can you explain why are we calling it a mixed use district when it's not really? I mean, it's all residential, right?
The site itself is, but the general area is mixed use because there's a variety of different housing types. There's commercial along Round Grove Road. And that is a base zoning district that does allow these types of housing. And usually you have to pick a base district that most closely resembles as far as the development standards.
Okay, you're saying that the along the front edge because those are the work units? Is that correct? Are you wrong?
Oh, are we talking about?
Euclid.
Euclid. Yeah, Euclid does not have any work. Are you thinking about item three on business 121?
I might be, I might be getting in this stuff.
Yeah, this is the Euclid.
I just thought you said that there was some, there was some commercial in it.
No, not on the side, but there is.
Grounding.
There's in the general area along Round Grove Road.
Okay, I got you. Sorry about that.
Other questions on that too? Item three, ordinance granting a zone change from AO to Light and Dust Real.
Well, I have a question about that. If this is for the larger room, then that's okay as well.
Oh, and Light and Dust Real, sorry about that.
So my question is, this isn't a zone change here in more apartments in. And we were talking before about, you know, how do we know when we have too many apartments? And if this is another apartment complex, we're going for a very verbal city already. And how do we compare to other cities? And when do we know that we've had this time to stop building apartments?
There is no magic number or percentage. It's, you know, most communities kind of grow based on market conditions and according to long range plans. Comparing us to other cities, we are, we are in the top tier as far as a percentage of multifamily. As far as units, unit count in the city, we're about 52%. We're number two out of our 17 year communities. Only one is higher, and it's the city of Irving. But they had a very similar growth pattern that we did early on with a lot of the deployment coming into the city. It's early growth, growth stage, which created a big market demand for multifamily early in the growth. Whereas other, you know, standard suburban areas typically have, you know, a lot of single family residential throughout the biggest portion of their, of their growth. So that's one reason, but there's a lot of different factors.
And this is a better use of the space than was over there. It's more aligned what we're trying to do for 2025 there, right?
Staff has been working for over five years with various developers to try to symbolize those properties and come up with a better use. And with the development going in at Crown Center, which is going to be a mixed use urban village, this use will complement that.
Thank you.
Other questions on three? Item four, approval of minutes, any questions on the minutes? Item five, policy statement for HR paid leave holidays. Item six, first amendment to an ED agreement between City of Lewisville and Burns Construction.
Sorry, did I get that right? He's leaving by the end of the year? Is that what it's moving by the end of the year?
Yes, so that really the only change on this is the start of construction.
Item seven, Louisville Park Alliance.
I have a good question. Stacy, I saw Stacy, right?
Yeah.
So help me understand the, why have a nonprofit when we have a parks board? I mean, are these going to be complementary each other or they?
Sure, yeah, I think they're going to be complementary. One of the things is there are some granting sources that we can't go after because we're a municipality, but you need a 501(c)(3) nonprofit to do so.
Okay.
It also gives us some, you know, additional fundraising opportunities that don't really lend itself to the city government just to go out and generally raise funds. So that's really going to be one of the things that we look at. It also helps us with our financial support sustainability strategy in terms of helping create funding for families who might not be able to afford our membership, our camp fees to help give a boost there.
You have to get grants. Thank you.
Bring a whole movie on that. Other questions on the Louisville Park Alliance? Consideration, item eight, consideration of a resolution nominating candidates to Denton Central Appraisal District Board. Things have settled down over there. I don't have an issue with putting all of our votes behind Anne and Alex like we did last time. Both of them have expressed an interest in serving for another session.
Is it equally?
That's what we did last time, I think.
Equal split?
Yeah, just an equal split. I'm not hearing anything about other candidates out there. I haven't even had anybody reach out to us this time around. Item nine. Approving and authorizing issuance and sale of City of Lewisville's special assessment revenue bonds. And that's for the pit at Lakeside Crossing. Item 10, consideration of ordinance, ordinance, approving a service and assessment plan and assessment role for the Lakeside Crossing Public Improvement District. One follows the other from nine to 10. Item 11, consideration of resolution acknowledging the 2023 community waste disposal cost of service rates.
When we move to Republican again?
That'll be April 7th, 2024.
It's about these six months of a couple of.
This is a stop, so it's not only a stopgap, but by our contract, we're obligated to acknowledge and then the contract we inherited from.
Right, okay.
And most of these contracts have escalated. Item 12, consideration on ordinance deleting and reserving the future use, Article 2 curfew of Chapter 8 of the Louisville City Code. Rudy would love this one.
He would.
By the time that would come through. All right. State law supersedes us on this one after this next session, which is why this is.
I've got a whole rant about that, but I'm going to say that next session.
Fair enough. There will be a window. Reports. And we do have some closed session tonight, so be prepared for that. Next up, we have Paul Christina, President and CEO of DCTA to present on the Denton County Transit Authority current update. And you have to recuse.
Hey, well, good evening, Mayor Gilmore, members of councils, City Manager Powell, members of our staff, and also in your capacities is our new board chair, Mayor Gilmore, and alternate board member, member Green. It's good to be with you here this morning. It's been about a year since I was here to give you all an update as to how your Denton County Transportation Authority is, has been performing, and we have lots of good news to share with you. So I'm really glad to be here with you today. They just hit the down arrow. There you go. Okay, so one of the biggest items to share with you is that we've been working really hard to build our staff at DCTA. After I was named as the permanent CEO last September, we have brought on board a stellar executive team, beginning with Mr. Maurice Bell, our Chief Operating Officer, our CFO, Sherrell Evans-Jones, Javier Trilla, our Vice President of Innovation and Information Technology. And then our most recent addition, just last week, Mr. Austin Frith, our Vice President of Planning and Development, who joined us after a 13-year run at DFW Airport doing all things airport planning and development. And he has already hit the ground running. I talked about team building. This picture tells the story. So we've hired 23 people into the agency since last year. We have an authorized strength in our budget of 43 people on the administrative staff. You see 23 jobs there. Assuming we fill the rest of the roles that we have by March of this coming year, we will have turned over two-thirds of the organization in that 24-month period. It's been a very healthy exercise for the agency to align with the Board of Directors on what is it that we're trying to achieve as an agency, develop a structure of goals and objectives and performance management systems to allow people to leverage their gifts and talents to generate those outcomes. And we see this as a result of that work, and we're really proud of the team that we're building. So let's talk about our performance. One of the biggest things also that we've done in the last year is institute a culture of accountability and performance and metrics around three primary measurables: safety, service, and ridership. Safety comes first because if we don't do our business safely and if the people who use our service or who work to deliver our service don't go home the same way that they came to us, then we have failed as an organization. So we measure that in terms of what we call incidents measurable according to the Federal Transit Administration or the Federal Railroad Administration. What you see is that our, our KPIs for our three-month trailing incidents per 100,000 miles, we remain below our KPI of one throughout the year. And then on the bus side, had a pretty good year until the summertime hit. And we've seen, the good news about this, though, is that we see the root causes of these things, and then we can go back to drive continuous improvement. Our September numbers are back to where we've seen it for the rest of the year, so that we call this summer an anomaly. On the railroad side, we've had one employee injury this year. That person has recovered, is back in service, and so we're pleased there.
What is a bus incident?
So a bus incident might be something where a bus might swipe a fire hydrant or a curb or a mirror or something to that effect that causes, causes damage that caused the bus to be taken out of service. Our vision is zero, but the biggest, the biggest takeaway with this is DCTA is measuring these things on a regular basis and keeping them in front of us, which is a big step forward that we've taken this year. On the service performance front, we've got a slide here that talks about GoZone and fixed route buses. The train is basically 99% all the time. So we, for purposes of this conversation, wanted to highlight a couple of things. On the GoZone side, lower numbers are good. So we measure seat unavailability. Our KPI is 17.5%. That means 17.5% of the time, somebody tries to call for a GoZone ride and doesn't get one. You see where we're actually performing in Denton in August, about 10%. In Louisville Highland Village Zone, about 10%. So really exceeding KPIs there. What we've seen over the course of the 24 months that GoZone has been in service is that the algorithm and the computer gets a, has begun to develop more efficient routing to deliver more trips per hour than every vehicle is on the road. And so that's where we see that performance come in. On the wait time side, our KPI is 24 minutes, meaning it should only take 24 minutes or less for a car to come to you when the car is called. And what you see there is we're hovering around a 20 to 21 minute timer. This is why we're getting about 120,000 ride requests a month in general and delivering about 70,000 rides a month overall. But I'll talk more about that in a second. On the fixed route side, what you see is an on-time performance in aggregate across the entire network of 90%. You've seen this, this service up and down, up and down. We made a big step to end our contract with a contract general manager that was at the North Texas Mobility Corporation in March of 2023, just this past year, because of these performance issues that, that you see here. What happened after March is we got steady improvement and then school started again at UNT. Students came back in force. Enrollment's about 46,000 students this year. We're seeing much more loading on our buses on the UNT service than we had before. But the good news is we have dialogue with the University of North Texas to understand the pain points so that we can fix it. And I can tell you that in the September numbers that we, we shared and then the October numbers so far, we're starting to get back up in that 89, 90% range. Our demand response service is our access, our paratransit service. These are elderly, disabled, medically qualified people that call and book rides in advance. Our KPI there is 90%, and you see that we're exceeding that handily. Here, here's the good news story that isn't happening maybe anywhere else in the country. The thing is that DCTA has recovered 100% plus of its pre-pandemic ridership. This graph is all modes of DCTA ridership since the A-Train started back in 2011. And what you see is the agency kind of hovered around 3.3 million, 3.1 million rides. And then COVID-19 happened. This was the depths of our COVID-19 ridership, just about 1.1 million rides. We doubled our ridership last year from 1.1 to 2.2 million. And this year, just closing the, about to close the books, we're just over 2.9 million rides across the system. So in two years, basically tripled ridership back to near best ever performance. And now the question is, we're done talking about COVID. It's how, how high can we go overall? And again, in the transit industry in general, most transit agencies in the country, American Public Transit Association will tell you they're back to 70% pre-pandemic ridership, many places less. So DCTA is an industry leader in this regard. Let's drill into those numbers just a little bit. Mode by mode, year-over-year comparison from fiscal '22 to fiscal '23, GoZone up 42%. The, the Board of Directors provide additional investment to deliver the maximum that service can provide. And we're seeing that now. Those KPIs are stabilized, the demand is stabilized. We saw a little bit of a blip when the students came back to school at UNT. But overall, the system is performing as we think it will in the future. On the bus side in Denton, up 41%. This is the, the overall UNT plus Connect service, but we'll talk about just the Connect service in a second. The railroad back up over 30% this year. So the A-Train was hit hard during COVID-19, just like every other commuter train in the, in the country. We saw 30% ridership last year increase, another 30% year increase this year. It tells us the train is a relevant service product even for, for our community today. A few different factors, I think. Congestion on I-35, if you're driving I-35W in the peak period between Denton and Carrollton, you feel a little bit more congestion that's causing people to come back. As student enrollment increases, people, more students are riding the train. And that's a really good news story. More on that in a minute. Our Vanpool numbers, Vanpool was the only service really to grow during the depths of the pandemic because those essential workers still need the warehouse jobs. And it's, it's staying steadily over 200,000 rides a year. Overall, a 36% increase, like I said before. Now look at the Connect service. This is our fixed route bus service in Denton. Routes three, six, and seven remain in service. And the Board of Directors last summer made a decision to increase frequency on Route six and Route seven from 40-minute frequency to 20-minute frequency, meaning a bus comes by a bus stop every 20 minutes. In peak periods, 70% ridership over the bus network. Another one of those kind of numbers that you don't see in transit agencies anywhere else in the country. The other interesting thing is Route three, which did not get a frequency increase, has also grown significantly. You've seen, you see the 300% increase from last August to this August. It's benefiting, ridership there is benefiting somewhat by the opening of the new Our Daily Bread Shelter Facility out on 288. But investment in six and seven in frequency drove ridership on Route three that didn't get increased frequency. And so we're seeing what we can learn and grow from that. Talking about Louisville for a minute. In fiscal 2019, the Connect service delivered 112,000 rides. That's pretty much high water mark in on Connect. In fiscal '22, Connect goes away, GoZone comes in, 112,000 rides. Now look at fiscal '23, 198,000 rides on the GoZone service compared to 112,000 rides on Connect when you all had bus service here. So 80% more transit ridership in the city of Louisville as a result of that change. That's a huge success story. Hats off to you all and your community for understanding what your stakeholders want and then, and then developing options for innovative ways to deliver that demand, deliver on that demand. You probably saw press clippings. We completed our 1,000,000th ride back in March of 2023. Our two-year anniversary, we're at 1.4 million rides. And then as we go to the community events like Western Days, like Louisville ISD Back to School Fair, we begin to get stories about how people are using these services, like students at Louisville High School who are using GoZone to go to 5 o'clock or 6 o'clock football practice. I'm joined by Mr. David McGonaghy, our Director of Marketing and Communications. He's, he and his team are beginning to put these stories together and develop them for us so that we can tell them even more frequently. Overall impact, 45,000 riders have used GoZone. 80% of those trips are to and from what we call essential, essential functions like grocery stores, doctor's appointments, all of that sort of stuff. And then you see some of the demographics about the people who are using the service. At DCTA, we, we want to be a, a service provider of choice, get people where they need and want to go. Some of these people need the GoZone service to get where they need to go. We also want to be appealing to the people who have options and make it a service that they want to use as well. So we'll talk about now that service performance, ridership, now some major initiatives. We're working very closely with your staff to think about how we develop transit-oriented development at Old Town Louisville Station. I talked about the A-Train, how it's come back 30% year-over-year. That's, that's the commuter market. The A-Train can really thrive when it is integrated into the fabric of the communities that we serve. That means the master planes that we have and the master planes that you have say the same thing. And I've really enjoyed getting to work with Richard and Gina and Marichelle and their teams to talk about what's happening in our Old Town Louisville Station. So we're developing this framework around the multimodalism, helping people walk, bike, use GoZone to get to the train, to get to where they want to go, the enhancing the identity, weaving again the train into the fabric of the community, and then just making it a better, more usable system for everyone. So we own, DCTA owns a block of land. Here's the, here's the A-Train corridor, and here's railroad down here. And this is the Burns Construction property somewhere over there. And this is our parking lot that exists today. We own that property and have the ability to build transit-oriented development on it. We also have some money in hand to build a DCTA administrative facility. Right now, what we're thinking in our conversations with staff is it's probably a three-phased approach. Phase one is some sort of administrative building. And then phase two and three, we really have an advantage that we, we don't have a mandates to develop that property right now. And so we get to see how the market develops, see what's interesting to the city of Louisville and the people who live and work and play in this area so that we can figure out maybe down the road what, what. But our real interest is getting that pickupover facility built. And by the end of this year, the DCTA Board of Directors will have some more information on what potential square footages could look like and all that sort of stuff. And again, every step of the way, be working with Claire and Gina and Rich and Marichelle to talk about how these, how these pieces come together. In addition to that, we have an initiative going on right now with our partners at Dallas Area Rapid Transit to create a joint rail operating facility. So if you're familiar with our rail operations and maintenance facility off of railroad, we have designed, put together a design that will allow Dallas Area Rapid Transit to house and do heavy maintenance on the Silver Line train sets that they are going to be bringing into town to run service from DFW Airport out to Plano. The reason for this is the DCTA Board and the DART Board got together back in 2019 and said, we have to do things that make sense for the taxpayers, that work, that makes sense for us to work together. And so that's how this partnership got started. Right now, this project is 100% designed, and we're at a decision point. DART is working with the city of Plano on a light maintenance facility out on the east end of the line. And Plano has begun indicating that there may be some planning and zoning opportunity to turn that into a heavy maintenance facility, which would delay the start of this construction for some time. But also, the Federal Railroad Administration asked Dallas Area Rapid Transit and us to apply for a waiver, a different type of waiver, to positive train control system that we have on, in hand there. And that waiver has to be processed through the FRA. So these two things will come to, come to a decision point, probably sometime in the November, December timeframe, and we'll have more clarity on the timing and what this project looks like moving forward. But here's, here's the, the bigger deal on the A-Train corridor. Back in, it's been a year and a half ago now, the, the DCTA Board asked me, hey, tell us how we can enhance the value of the A-Train by getting the A-Train to the downtown Carrollton and making it go faster. Back to this idea that we want to be a service provider of choice. We have to be competitive as a mode with the highway traffic that moves at 70 miles an hour when it's not jammed up. And also to make it easy for people to get to places like DFW Airport. So when the Silver Line stands up from DFW to Plano, it's going to pass through downtown Carrollton. So this project would cause the A-Train to be extended about two miles to get to that station so that a person can jump on at the Louisville Station or the Old Town Station, the Hebron Station, or Highland Village, Louisville Lake, any place on the A-Train corridor and have a two-seat commuter rail ride to the front door of DFW Airport for the cost of a regional pass, saving on parking and all the headaches that come when you try to fly out of DFW. So we took on this enhancement study to say, what is the program of infrastructure projects that would enable that? And the answer is generally shown right here on this page. What you have to do is, because this is the classic, train A leaves Denton at this time, and train B leaves Trinity Mills at this time, and they're going this fast, and where do they have to meet? You've got to build passing sightings for those trains to meet so that they're not occupying the same track. So this program will require a siding extension at downtown Denton Transit Center, a new siding at Corinth, Highland Village, Louisville Lake Station. And then this is the segment of track that is this one, where the track exists, but it's in really poor condition and needs to be upgraded. This, this program also includes a station at Corinth, and this is a concept to understand if the city of Corinth is interested in participating or becoming part of the DCTA community, whatever that might look like. The, the short answer is we've, we've done the work to know what it looks like with Corinth Station in or out of this. And those conversations proceed under a different timeline as DCTA looks to solve the problem of getting down to Carrollton and capturing this opportunity. So really, to wrap up, other initiatives that we're taking on or that we have taken on is really for the first time, I think, having a long-range financial plan for DCTA that says, here's a picture of our physical plant, here's what it's going to take to reinvest in our fixed assets and our movable assets over the course of time from a rail fleet perspective, bus fleet perspective, and what is the capital requirement for doing that? We've, we've gotten the first step down the road in that process through our budget program this year. We'll be looking at our fare policy. As, as an agency, we need to have a board-approved policy that says, here's how we charge fares, here's what those fares are. It's been some time since that's been looked at, so we intend to look at that comprehensively this year. And then lastly, and perhaps most importantly, enhancing the quality of our customer service function so that we can have a one-stop shop for anybody who's riding DCTA regardless of mode to get local quality customer service when they encounter an issue or need help using our system. So with that, I'll say thank you very much. I'm happy to take any questions. And again, just appreciate the city of Louisville's support to DCTA and all the things that we've been doing. Mayor Gilmore, Councilmember Green are staunch advocates for us, and I appreciate that. And we, we appreciate the partnership that we have with staff so that we have a collective vision and move forward together. So any questions?
I have a couple. Can you go back to the slide that shows Connect three, six, and seven?
Sure.
Just curious about that. Maybe this is something I should already know, but as you connect one, two, and five, are they, do they not exist?
Yeah, so there was Connect one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, on and on. These are the connect routes that are remaining.
Okay.
Right, and for simplicity of maintaining naming conventions, make it easier for people.
Don't make sure they weren't left out for a reason. We're checking the books and anything, so those are good. The other, the other question I've got is, Claire, my understanding was that we paid a set of funds to bring Castle Hills into this as well?
I think that Paul could answer that a while.
Yeah, so sometime in fiscal '22, the Board added, adding money to the GoZone contract to encompass the entirety of the Louisville city limits, which included Castle Hills and other areas.
Correct. So we've thought before, I didn't have great experience trying to use it in Castle Hills. I'm trying to figure out if that's money well spent or not for the Castle Hills area. I'd love to, it's been, I guess, eight months of social chats talked. And this, that to be done here, I'd love to get with you to talk more about, has anything done, been done to enhance that service out there? Or is that just money we should spend elsewhere in the city?
Yeah, so happy to have the conversation. I, I remember the conversation that we had very well. The, I showed you the KPIs that talk about seat unavailability and wait time on the, on the zone as a whole. If you're still having those issues, then I would like to know that so that we can drill into it a little bit more. One of the things that we've seen is sometimes the size of the zone. When we talk about Highland Village and Castle Hills, pretty far apart. If those problems persist, we'd like to understand where you're getting those experiences, when you're getting those experiences, so we can analyze the data and see if there's other things that we can do to adjust so that you get the performance that everybody.
Let's do this, because I stopped after we had our conversation. I'll, I'll commit to another 60 days. I'll try it again or experiment again. I'll get with you.
Okay.
See if there's opportunity there still.
Very good.
Fair.
Sure.
Okay.
And you can, you got my phone number and email address? You can call me directly and go to lunch or whatever.
That's very, thank you.
Other questions, comments? Paul, I just, I want to thank you. I mean, it's been a tremendous lift, basically a rebuild of the organization since we modified the enabling legislation back in 2019. You guys are doing a great job providing tremendous value for our residents, you know. You guys are doing a great job, providing tremendous value for our residents, you know, point-blank. We've doubled ridership in this city, 45,000 unique Lewisville residents drive. And that's, I'm just talking Lewisville, but then we start looking at the 407 corridor. There's an amazing graphic that Paul pulled up just a little while ago, not in this meeting, but for our board, that shows all of the folks that are Lewisville residents that are going to the 407 corridor. Why? They're taking jobs in that corridor, and it's providing a lot of economic development over there as well. So Highland Village is getting tremendous value out of it. I think what you'll see over the next year, for those of you who have interest, is we are going to continue to look and refine where bus routes make sense. Again, our goal is to move people. It's not about which way you move people, it's about moving people in the most cost-effective way possible and safely. And so you'll see more of that, where, you know, UNT is beginning to have conversations with us and, you know, increase that partnership, which is exciting, because last time we talked with them about a contract, they were almost half the size they are now. So that's a huge impact on the service. So thank you, Paul. Thanks to staff. You guys are doing a great job. Love to hear more of the stories that you got as they come out in the media, but you guys are doing good.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Let's get Brandon back in here.
I was watching your gifts.
Next up, we have discussion on CoCare update, and this will be presented by our Assistant Police Chief, Bill Warhol.
May I start? Councilmembers, Mayor, thank you for this opportunity. We're excited to kind of tell you where it started and kind of where we are with CoCare. I'm going to start with Chief McNeil, who's really got some of the history, and then I'll jump back in.
We do the name in Mary Council. So here's things we'll cover tonight. Go ahead and do one more. So I want to talk about the conception of this program, and the need for this program, or this program was developed out of need. So the calls for mental health emergency services has increased over the years. We've seen a steadily increase. Think back to the time that this came to Council, this was, we brought it to you in March of 2021, and so we had a lot of unrest in society. That unrest breeds a bigger need for mental health services, so we had had a large spike, but this has been an increase that has been happening over years. So mental health calls take about three times longer than a normal call, so it ties up both patrol and fire services, or EMS services, for an extended period of time that they're not able to make other calls. So Chief Dever, actually, I think this came out of a conference that he went to, initially saw this concept that, as a lot of programs do, they come out of bigger cities that have these problems on an increased scale, and they try to find solutions. But he saw this program where they have a specialized unit that goes out and responds to these mental health calls, especially trained officers and firefighters and mental health people that are able to go out and focus on these mental health calls, and they actually went to the emergency scenes. And so that's what we pitched, is coming to the scene, we're able to relieve fire, and we're able to relieve police to go back and make other calls while this crew can actually focus on these patients and spend a little bit extra time. They're able to build a relationship, so seeing the regular faces builds trust with people that are in a crisis, and it allows you to help encourage them to accept some services that they need, and it removes those barriers that we have. The other thing that this crew was pitched, as we pitched, was to be able to follow up. So not only go to an emergency scene when they call for an emergency services that they're in a crisis, but maybe prevent this by following up and helping, encouraging them, everything from as simple as make sure you're getting your medications, but also following up with services, therapy services, counseling services, whatever it is that you need that led to these crises. If we can prevent that crisis from happening, then that relieves the burden on our emergency services. So that's where we started, and that's kind of what we pitched. So as we built this, we presented this at a Council retreat in March, and the thinking was, hey, we're going to do this in October, this will be a program we can roll out and get some real planning behind, and based on what was happening in society and the importance of the need, Council was like, "No, let's get this going now." And so we started in June, so just a few months later, we're trying to get this program up and running. And so for fire, I want to talk about what, I guess I had an extra slide there. So for fire, we use arson investigators. So that is a peace officer, a firefighter, paramedic, which is the paramedic piece of that is what we wanted. We wanted them trained as a peace officer. So I had one on duty at the time that volunteered for this program, but that means I had to select two more. I had to send them to police academy, which is 22 weeks, and then follow up with, we sent them through the full FTO academy that police officers do, because if they're going to be on the street making calls, they need to have the exact same training and be brought up to the skill level that our patrol officers are. So that's why we did it, and it took, it actually took me a full year to get all three of my people trained up. It was about March of '22 before I had my unit up fully running. Before that, I had Mike Valor, who I told you was already a police officer and a paramedic. He went to days and worked days with our police officers to get this program up and running. But I'll turn it over and let you take it from here then to go with the police side and where we went.
Thanks, Chief. For the reason I've been asked to do this, this falls under my bureau, and so Chief asked me to kind of go over it, which I'm glad to. We didn't have quite the hurdle that fire had to get our guys trained. So we have a lot of mental health training in the academies and as police officers with external stuff. They did have to go through a couple of weeks, so we did have a selection process for people to apply, and it took us a couple of months to get them trained up, so we had two officers that were trained up much earlier because they had much less schooling. So during that time, they were able to do some research, and so that was actually very helpful for us. So I'm going to kind of present kind of where the concept started and some tweaks and adjustments that we've made that we've learned along the way and things that we found to make it better. And so in that program, one of the very first things, we started adjusting a schedule. The original concept was have a three-man team, one trained paramedic, one trained officer, and one trained mental health expert, and the vision was that they would respond to most crisis situations, and it would eliminate first responders from having to actually show up there. Realistically, that wasn't doable, but it seemed possible at the time. I'll kind of explain a little bit why we tweaked it off of that. We've had some trouble keeping a mental health consultant with us. It's worked really quite well without it. We enjoyed having him when we were there, but it took a while to get one. We only had one for six months out of this two-year window. That was part of the problem. The other problem was just really trying to reach all these mental health calls. They come in at all kinds of crazy hours, seven days a week, and it's hard to keep a three-man team always available. So we kind of adjusted that to a two-man team, and it was one mental health officer with a mental health paramedic, and that didn't really work very well either, so we've kind of tweaked it even to really now, we understand that first responders are going to have to come to these calls. The thought of them never having to go doesn't make sense. They're dangerous. They're potentially criminal. They're certainly potentially hazardous because they have weapons, suicidal homicidal thoughts in people, and sometimes potential violence. So we realized we really couldn't stop first responders from responding, but the thought was we could be more efficient, and if we could get CoCare to respond to some of those, we broke up into actually five individual schedules to try to spread out throughout the day and throughout the week. There's other reasons for that, because a lot of the resources weren't business hours. They're 8 to 5, and a lot of the resources that they're trying to connect are Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. There are some emergency services and some things outside of that, like us, but that's why we kind of readjusted that to try to improve our numbers for going there. That kind of reestablished our goals a little bit, from what was the original vision, we kind of maybe honed in a little bit better. We still had the number one. We wanted to reduce calls for service for patrol and paramedics to respond. If we could have less of those, and it wasn't occupying so much of their time when it's three times as long for them to go there, if we could relieve them, that would be a great thing. So that's still been our number-one goal. The second one is to get mental health patients and their families the help that they need, just like Chief McNeil expressed. That was an obvious need that we weren't really able to do before we created this unit. The third one was to build relationships with the mental health patients and their families, but also with the whole team, and this team is actually quite extensive. It's just not police and fire, it's MHMR, it's the mental health hospitals, it's the ER, it's the Denton County, well, Denton County Services that they have. We have the DA's office and the mental health unit, as well as judges who, mental health judges, and there's a lot of pieces and parts to this, and so it requires them to build relationships with all of them. And so it was a big learning curve. And the fourth one was to increase CoCare's on-scene to these critical incidents. We still wanted that number to get better, and we wanted to be able to help more in the area. So it started off by really collaborative meetings. There's actually quarterly meetings that take place that, with everybody that's kind of involved in the mental health field. So it's usually hosted by one of the mental health hospitals, UBH in Denton or Mayhill in Denton, and it brings in all the other CoCare, they have different names for them that, in our area, that work those, those units, as well as members of the DA, like I said, MHMR, there are some United Way and other services that participate. In those meetings, they're collaborating, what's working, what's not working, what needs to change, what doesn't. And these are a little, these are unique, because they're kind of unique with the culture of what's happening. So when our officers were out doing research, they realized, everybody does it a little bit different, because everybody has different systems and different needs, and even with the same title of the DA's office, work differently. So we realized that, hey, they really have to build these relationships and help us understand what we're doing. This caused a lot of changes. Now we were handling mental health cases, paper trails, what was required by the DA's office. When they would see our paperwork, hey, we need these words, we need this, we've written this way, the mental health people wanting a specific document and why it helped them. And so we were constantly tweaking. For the first six months, it was really a lot, a lot of changes going on, trying to fit in and trying to make sure we could do it properly. So lessons that we learned, there's no one way to really establish this. When we started looking at the whole metroplex and what people are doing, everybody had their version of it, and so we were creating ours, very similar in a lot of ways, but very unique to our situation and the groups that we're working with. One thing that we learned, we talked about follow-ups, and the original plan was really to follow up on the major ones, the homicidal and suicidal cases. In reality, we learned from other agencies, they were saying, "Listen, follow-ups are critical. They're actually vital in what you do, so spend time on follow-ups." And some weren't even focusing as much on the crisis side. They said, "No, because the follow-ups is what helps curb that." They said, "That will curb those numbers." Now, we're a little bit of a leap of faith, because that wasn't our original vision, but we started to focus on that a lot, and they said, "Hey, those relationships are important." All the relationships I already talked about, but those are very important because they break down the barriers. A lot of mental health patients really struggle when an officer shows up in a uniform. They're already having a hard time, and it doesn't, we're not always very approachable, and we're even scary sometimes. And when we have CoCare teams that start building these relationships, it breaks those barriers down. They tend to call us earlier, before they're in crisis and some of those things. So that's what we were trying to do, doing some proactive care, now assigning follow-ups on every one of those things. We also, some of our other changes that we had is we didn't always document every mental health case. For years, we would document the serious ones in an official report, but the minor ones were usually in a CAD note or something, and we got them help, or they voluntarily, we connected them, and we were done. We passed it over to the mental health, and we kind of gave them that connection. We realized we had to change that, because we needed to now be more consistent. So we passed, early in January, and I'll show you some numbers in a minute to talk about it, in January of '22, we looked at and said, "Hey, we've got to report everything." Doesn't matter how big or how small, there has to be a report. It can be relatively simple, but it has to have context, so then we can give them follow-ups, then we can build those relationships. And we were hoping that this would reduce 911 calls or crisis situations. So there's a lot with this, and I've talked about a lot of it. Some were just unrealistic expectations, that we could cut out any response to those from everybody but CoCare. But there's also other unrealistic expectations. Quite honestly, they're quite effective when they do show up. That makes people want them more often, which is harder because they're really good at what they do, and so there's some divide there. Police and fire want them more because they're really good at what they do and how they're doing it. We also had to develop new procedures. We had never done this. We never really did follow-up. We would just get ahold of the mental health facilities, and they would, we would connect them, and we stepped out. That was their thing. And so we had to build new procedures of how that was going to happen. How are we reporting it? How are we doing follow-ups? All those things grow into stuff that we got pretty good at. So the first six months was a little bit chaotic, as paperwork is constantly changing and the frustrations with that, but we all got on the same page eventually, and we don't do any home run swings anymore. They're just minor adjustments, as any good program is constantly adjusting, but we're not reinventing the wheel anymore. The DA's pretty happy, they have mental health quarterly, the chief just went with and just reported back this last week how happy they are because we're working really well with them, we're kind of all on the same pace, speaking the same language. Patrol occasionally took reports, I told you, now we're telling them all the time. Every case is assigned for follow-up, and I'm going to show you some numbers in a minute to show you how much we've stressed follow-up, but they all are, and not everybody takes up on the follow-up, not everybody responds to it, but we've had quite good success with that. Now we have specifically trained officers that can deal with it. They understand the system, they're patient, they're more patient than others do, and the repeat customers that sometimes can frustrate, can frustrate, the first responders don't really frustrate our CoCare people, they've already had a relationship with them, they already know kind of where we're going, and the customers are pleased because they know these people, and they know they're going to be taken care of. We've had a lot of response from families that finally found relief, that they said, "We were at a dead end for a long time, we didn't know what to do, we don't know how to do this." And these CoCare people reach out to them and connecting them constantly, "Here, this is the next option, this is what you can do," and they've had great success there with families and getting them the help that they need. One of our main goals, right? I've already talked about removing those barriers. Let's talk a little bit about numbers. Hard to pull numbers on stuff that you're determining, because those numbers don't exist. So it's like when a patrol car drives through a neighborhood, how many crimes did it prevent? I don't know. So that was a little bit of the challenge that we had, trying to find some numbers that would really show what CoCare was doing. We had, let me see what my real numbers are, 1,358 mental health calls in '22. That's a lot of calls. And 113 average a month, that's what that comes up to be, that's a lot of calls for service. And our responses were averaged at 36% for CoCare showing up to a crisis thing. Now, that number's not where we want it to be, and we've had some higher numbers since then, and I'll show you some of those, but they responded to 429 of them, 233 people were involuntary detained. There's a situation, there's a danger to themselves or others, and wherever they articulate that, we actually complete some paperwork related to that, and we detain them and take them to a health facility where they can get help, and sometimes that's against their will. We love it when they voluntarily want to go, if they need it, they don't always do that. And we were, we call those a NOED, and we have a couple of different acronyms for it, but it's basically a notice of detention, that emergency detention, that we're taking them. We now fill them out every time, whether they're going voluntarily or not, because sometimes people would voluntarily go, and then an hour later, they change their mind, and they want out, and they can't really hold them. So we actually complete that paperwork constantly. Out of the 1,358 mental health calls, 1337 were followed up on. So they were actually, they were able to reach somebody and did some follow-ups related to that. I want you to look at these numbers, though, because this is really trying to find numbers, just basically, we just did every call for service. So the darker blue is every call for service that we had, and the lighter blue are the follow-ups related to that. Now, the outliers, January, those numbers don't count too much. We weren't really reporting everything, that's when we made our change. So February is really the accurate number here, because we were now reporting every mental health call for service. You see that we've kept up almost constantly with every follow-up. We had lots, sometimes we had more because there was multiple follow-ups, some patients need more than one, and we've had some success. The other outliers, November, as Chief mentioned, his guys work arsons, they also do background checks. They were hiring a bunch of firemen, so we lost three of our CoCare to do backgrounds, so we see that. But here's the fruits of our labors. We put a lot of focus in doing follow-ups. Again, January outliers, the darker number are year '22, and the lighter number is '23. So throw January out, because we So throw January out because we weren't doing it, this is a real number, 98 is what we had this year for calls for service. But you'll notice almost every month, the calls for service dropped a little bit. All except June was our outlier, is at one more this year than we had the year before. But what's really interesting is May, a significant drop, July and August, half. That's an amazing, we've never seen numbers go down in the, in five, 10 years. We've never seen mental health calls, crisis calls go down. And this is the first time we're seeing a drastic, just the last two months, which is our main goal, right? Trying to drop those crises down and having these patients call earlier and being able to deal with it. So that's a great success for us because we think, hey, they told us these other agencies and we, we went with it and we're quite pleased. I don't have time for real world examples really, but I'll, let me give you a summary and I'll talk more if you want. Just pulling out average things, without co-care, we're, we're taking up to five hours to work it. There's a lot of stuff going on, a lot of officers involved and without co-care there, it's not nearly as efficient. So we could, like I said, I just pulled up some of the average things. It's about five hours with co-care. We average about an hour and a half to an hour 45 minutes. Why? Because they know what they're doing, they can relieve a lot of these first responders that originally show up to the emergency, weapons are secure, C is good. Co-care shows up, officer stays and then co-care assists them, they can do a task and co-care officers are very efficient with their programs. So even though their response isn't as much as we would like, because we want them to show up to higher percentage than 36%, I will say in July of this year, we, our co-care team responded to 57% of the calls one month, that's our highest and that's a, that's a huge number too. So what's next? Well, they haven't moved in yet. Serve Louisville is, is got a spot for them in November. Their lease runs out where they are and they'll move over to serve Louisville. We hope that'll also bridge the gap since we don't have a mental health counselor. We can now kind of pair with them, so we'll be in the same hallway with bunches of them. And we've been able to work okay still with them, even not having one permanently with us, but that's been very helpful. So in November, we're going to start seeing some changes there. Overall, we're quite pleased with how it's going. The first time we've seen some numbers drop down and, uh, we're really excited about the program, but I'm here to ask you any questions you might have.
I love everything about this program. It's a great program. I do have a quick question though about the follow-up calls. Are those correlated to the month? What I mean, some of those had like a spike higher than one. So they called a follow-up call, they did that month, it could have been the previous month or month after.
It could be previous month, yeah, and it could be, there could be three call, three follow-ups on one. They're probably pretty close though, because realistically, as soon as the report is, is taken, within a day or two, it's already pushed off for an assignment because we have co-care people working really seven days a week. So it could get pushed out earlier, but yes, there's going to be some, that's why you see some higher numbers, but it's, it's a general version, if that answers.
What, uh, what resources do you guys need to get? Obviously you need, it would be nice to have clinicians, but we can't. What resources do you need that we can't go through?
Well, you know, honestly, um, we're still kind of forging through these. So yes, the mental health aspect, we, we think we can work through that just with them moving into there. Clearly, a, a larger unit would be able to accomplish larger things. I'm, I'm not sure we're ready for that or even requesting something like that. And so right now, we're just trying to clarify and iron out, is this working and where we are? So I don't know, I, I, unless you can identify something really specific.
We're still evaluating if there's other changes that we need to make. We want to make sure that the, the program is working like we expect it to and want it to, and then as the need comes up, we'll submit budget requests.
I was going to add to that. So we're still in discussion with MHMR. I had a conversation with them after the, um, United Way breakfast. And so one of the concerns is that when we funded that position, we, they weren't able to keep that position we funded. And so it was very helpful while they were there and then we couldn't, they couldn't fill the position. And so we had money, we still have money that's, I think actually has probably gone to, um, it's probably expired because we have a new, uh, new fiscal year. We had originally started talking to them about, about doing it. They were like, well, we need to increase the, the salaries of the mental health professional. And I still, I, my hesitation on that is because if that person leaves again and then we're, you know, we don't have, what my preference is, is since we're right next door to MHMR, is can we have a battery of, you know, mental health professionals? We can provide some type of funding to them to have access to all of them. So it doesn't really matter. If you lose one person, we still have access to the service. And so I think they're, they're exploring what that looks like financially, feasibly for them. Um, and obviously accessibility when they're taking clients and they're meeting with people during the day, can they really be called off of whatever they're doing to help us? So we're still exploring that as a potential resource. Cause I do think if, if you talk to their staff, they're like, this was a great resource for us and we just need it to be logistically feasible.
Other questions?
Chief, two, uh, three things that came to mind for me. I am so incredibly impressed with how flexible you guys are in this progress, this program. I mean, we had in our heads that this was going to be three people out in the field and it was going to look a certain way and you guys made the pivot. And the other two points, I think that, that I'm taking out of this is that, you know, if we get a key performance indicator that, you know, we're dropping four hours of, you know, we're processing these types of calls in one hour instead of five, I think that's, that's a huge delta. I mean, really, really moves the needle for, for residents feeling safe and people getting where they need to get quickly. Cause if you're having a mental health crisis and you're sitting around for, you know, longer time than you need to, I know they're not sitting there for the full five hours, that's processing time and everything else, but, um, that, that's huge. And then, um, the other piece of this that I think is, is interesting, and I don't know if you hit on it, um, it sounds like you're getting people to actually self-assess and call you when they feel like they're getting to a crisis point. So we're actually, we're actually curtailing that. Is that, is that what you're seeing?
Yeah, so that's exactly right. So we were hoping, we were, when we did our research with other agencies, they told us, hey, this is, this will start happening, you're going to see these numbers. Frankly, that'd be great, but we have seen it. We start seeing these relations, especially our repeat people, right? A lot of these are repeat and they will call directly there and never makes a 911 call because they're not quite in crisis yet. They're feeling it coming and I think that's why you're starting to see these calls drop. That doesn't mean co-care's working less, they're probably working twice as hard because they're getting direct calls. But they build great relationships. Our co-care people are amazing and they, they really care about what they do. Yes, we see, I think that's why we're seeing some of those numbers come down so much.
A lot of times it's the family members. They will notice that, you know, whoever missed their doctor's appointment, they're not taking their medication, they'll reach out to co-care and then co-care can go meet with them and say, hey, you gotta do this and they go do it, so.
Getting into that proactive policing, that's, that's really cool.
Yes.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Yeah.
Great stuff. All right, well, we are done with workshop. We've got about, uh, three, four minutes before we break for council. We're here from workshop.
No sound.
Please stand with me and join me with a, uh, for a moment of some quiet contemplation. Amen, thank you.
Please join me in the pledges to the American and Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
I think I have a few of our LISD friends here tonight. Dr. Shawna Miller, y'all come on up, would you? LISD Chief of Staff, we have Mr. Doug Emery, a teacher, a teacher, amazing people. Donna Friend, Amanda McKnight, Heather Lewis, Alexis Miller, um, and Peggy Hill, I believe. Right here is perfect. And, and first of all, I want to, I want to thank all these folks because they could be at an LISD Board of Trustees meeting right now. They could be there instead and there's so much more going on. But I want to talk just briefly, um, because it's kind of in the news and it'll be in the news here in the next couple of weeks with our state legislature. I don't know anybody whose first question, when they come to a community is anything other than, how are your schools? And our schools are amazing. So. So when we talk about the things that city councils have to do, one of the number one things that we are tasked with is promoting the safety and security of the community. One of the biggest drivers of that is property values and the number one driver of property values is your public schools. So with that being said, I would love to proclaim Louisville Teachers' Day on October 5th, 2023. And whereas the city of Louisville's future strength depends on providing a high quality education to all students, and whereas teacher quality matters more to student achievement than any other school-related factor, whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lesson plans and supporting students, and whereas our Louisville teachers have demonstrated great resilience, adaptability and creativity during the COVID-19 crisis, and whereas our community recognizes and supports its teachers in educating the children of this community, and whereas teachers can, is a statewide movement, supported by more than 150 partnering businesses and organizations committed to elevating the teaching profession and honoring the critical role teachers play in the success of Texas. And whereas that the Louisville City Council encourages members of our community to personally express appreciation to our teachers by displaying a light blue ribbon outside their homes and businesses for the remainder of the week, beginning Thursday, October 5th, 2023, as a symbol of support to our educators. Now for, therefore I, TJ Gilmore, Mayor of the City of Louisville, Texas, and on behalf of the City Council, join Teachers' Can and its partnering entities across Texas in celebrating World Teachers' Day and declare October 5th, 2023 as Louisville Teachers' Day. Proclaim the second day of October, 2023. Let's give them a hand. I mean, if you've got a mic, you can talk, it's all yours. If not, we'd love to get a picture if you guys don't mind. So, awesome, who's going to take that? Got us?
Yes.
Pretend you like each other.
We actually do.
We do.
Thank you.
Yeah, where am I going? I got one more. Somebody's got an agenda, it's not me. All right. And then next up, I have Mr. Richard Lutke and the planning staff. You guys wouldn't mind? So along the theme, because teachers build our community through education, we also have a team of people that literally focus on how do we build our community? Um, and this month happens to be Community Planning Month. Whereas change is constant, affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas and other places. You wrote this, didn't you? And whereas community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live. And whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. And whereas the full benefits of planning require public officials and citizens who understand, support and demand excellence in planning and planning limitation. And whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories. And whereas the American Planning Association endorses National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight how planning is essential to recovery and how planners can lead communities to equitable, resilient and long-lasting recovery. And whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Zoning Board of Adjustment, the Old Town Design Review Committee and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the city of Louisville. And whereas we recognize the many valuable contributions made by the professional planning staff of the city of Louisville and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Now therefore it be resolved that the month of October 2023 is hereby designated as Community Planning Month in the city of Louisville in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month, proclaim this second day of October, 2023. Let's give our planners a hand. Richard, did you want to say anything?
Well, I just want to thank the city council and really all the departments of the city of Louisville for helping us be so successful in implementing all of our plans. We've done it all together. It hadn't been just the, the planning department. It's been all of the departments, it's been our city manager and we could not be more proud to be planners in the city of Louisville. Thank you.
All right, item D, public hearing. Public hearing number one, a public hearing on the levy of assessments on property within the Lakeside Crossing Public Improvement District. Chapter 372 of the Texas Local Government Code, the Public Improvement District Assessment Act governs the creation and operation of public improvement districts within the state of Texas. The Lakeside Crossing Public Improvement District was created on March 20th, 2023. At the August 21st, 2023 meeting, the city council approved a resolution accepting the preliminary service and assessment plan and assessment role for the district. The SAP identifies the public improvements to be provided by the PID, the cost of the public improvements and the manner of assessing the property in the PID for the cost of the public improvements. The assessment role identifies the assessment on each parcel based on the method of assessment identified in the plan. At the August 21st, 2023 meeting, the city council called for a public hearing to consider the SAP and assessment role. Any changes to the preliminary SAP will be incorporated into the final bound documents. They'll be approved by ordinance when PID reimbursement bonds are issued on October 2nd, 2023. It is recommended that the city council conduct the public hearing as set forth in the caption above, and we do have Ms. Marichelle Samples, our Director of Economic Development, and Julie Partain, partner with Racewell LLP, um, here for questions. The public hearing is now open. Counsel, if there are no questions or comments, and I don't have any comments cards that have been filled out for this item, um, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion to second, counsel, please vote. Public hearing closes unanimously. Item two, public hearing, consideration of an ordinance granting a zone change from planned development estate townhouse district to planned development mixed use district on approximately 7.288 acres out of the El Bourgeois Survey, Abstract Number 52, located at 2328, 2316, 2304 and 2274 South Euclid Lane, as requested by Josh Barton and Patricia Fonte McAdams on behalf of DMR Homes and Construction LP, the property owner, case number 23-07-5-PZ. The subject properties were previously rezoned to planned development estate townhouse district in January 2022. The previous PD called for 36 detached front innly lot, entry lots, making many backing to the open space. Due to cost and interest rate escalation, the developer has revised the plan with townhomes that are rear entry and facing the open space. The applicant proposes to rezone the property to planned development mixed use district consisting of 56 attached residential lots and two detached residential lots. The central open space that will preserve existing large post oak trees has been slightly reduced in size, but now has streets along three sides instead of one, making it more visible and accessible. Street stub outs to the north and south property lines will facilitate the future expansion of the neighborhood. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval 5 to 0 on September 5th, 2023, and it is recommended that the city council approve the ordinances set forth in the caption above. We do have Mr. Richard Lutke, our AACP Planning Director, available for questions and the public hearing is now open. I do not have any comments associated on this one, so counsel, I'll entertain a motion if there are no questions to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Counsel, entertain a motion to approve the ordinance.
Motion to approve.
Second.
City Attorney.
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning approximately 7.288 acres of land out of the El Bourgeois Survey, Abstract Number 52, located on the west side of Euclid Lane from planned development estate townhouse district zoning. District zoning to Plan Development Mixed Use District zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the zoning amendment herein made promotes the health, safety, and general welfare of the city, providing for repealer severability, a penalty, and an effective date in declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you'd please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item three, public hearing. Consideration of an ordinance granting a zone change from Agricultural Open Space District and Light Industrial District to Plan Development Multifamily III District on 6.74 acres out of the SM Hayden Survey Abstract 537, located at 1910 and 1914 East State Highway 121 Business, as requested by Spence Miller of Chaparral Partners, the applicant on behalf of 1910 East Highway 121 Series of HE Realty LLC and Texas Junk Inn It LLC, the property owners. The properties are located at 1910 and 1914 East State Highway 121 Business are currently used as salvage yards. The applicant is proposing a planned development to redevelop these two parcels for a 251-unit multifamily use. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval five to nothing on September 5th, 2023, and it is recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. We do have Mr. Richard Lutke, our Planning Director, available for questions, as well as Mr. Maxwell Fisher, President of Zone Dev Land Use Consultants, to provide a brief presentation. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please, sir.
I just wanted to introduce myself. Oh, excuse me. Spence Miller with Chaparral. We're the applicant tonight. Just wanted to thank you all for letting us come here and present before you. My colleague Maxwell is going to run through a quick presentation, and then we're happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Mayor, counsel, my name is Maxwell Fisher with Zone Dev 2502, Grandview Drive, Richardson, Texas 75080, representing Chaparral. Do you have a brief presentation? I'll be fast. Chaparral is a company recently founded, but the partners with the firm have been with a former couple of other companies for a very long time. So they bring over 35 years of experience in commercial development with this project. This particular site, I'm actually a former city planner as well, and I can't recall a time when you had a development that would remove almost seven acres of salvage yard, but that's what we're doing here, combining two salvage yard properties and developing a highly aesthetic multifamily development that sort of carries forward what we're seeing on a property close to here that's also gone residential. So we'll basically be replacing a lot of obsolete, or I should say visually disturbing parking vehicles and parking area with basically nice-looking buildings you'll see here in these next few photos. But we're proposing three buildings. We do have, these will be an elevator serve, four-story development, all your amenities that you typically see with apartments, and then some, everything will have stainless steel appliances, granite countertops, et cetera. We do have a live-work component of six units facing 121. So if someone has a small business, they could have a professional office, some sort of personal service, instructional type of service, maybe an artist could live there. So you still retain some of that commercial component where it makes sense on 121 without disrupting the rest of the residential community. Here's the building. You can see it's well articulated, both vertically and horizontally. This is a view as you enter the property. This is actually what it will look like. Another shot. This one's looking southeast from 121. We have a few variances that we'd be happy to go over if you have any questions. We do think this development aligns with the comp plan and expands your housing choices and keeps rent prices in check, as we know they've gone up. So I'll summarize just by stating we're removing auto salvage yard with a nice-looking multifamily market-rate development that's one and two bedrooms that will largely cater to young professionals and smaller families. Staff did recommend support and also P and Z as well. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions?
I have a comment and a question. So first comment will be about the parking, because you know I got to say something about the parking. So we've been looking at this as a, we've had several other projects come with the 1.6 ratio. And so I always have to think about that a little bit and make sure that we're not creating a parking issue. I do have a question about, so that there's going to be garages and carports. So the garages are going to be specific to one unit, right?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. And then the covered parking, I'm assuming that can be assigned to a specific unit as well.
Correct.
So that can create a little bit of an issue. I actually like to look at it as a, how many parking spaces per bedroom? Because it's, you know, the dynamics between a one-bedroom and a two-bedroom and a three-bedroom are a little bit different, right?
Correct.
So I was looking through my examples that we've seen with some other projects that we've had. And I'm actually, this one actually parks because we, there are no three bedrooms. It's all one and two bedrooms.
You stole my answer.
Yeah. So two-thirds, yeah, I'll get there. I analyzed it. So we got about two-thirds of the units being one bedroom. So it actually works out to where I think the bedroom count's like 339, and we've got 402 parking spaces. So that's actually much higher than what we usually see with the parking per bedroom. So I'm good with that, with the parking. I do have a question on the open space calculation. Where in the world are we getting 1 point-something acres of open space? Is that just the number? Is it, when you take out the building and everything else, that's what's left over in the acreage?
Yeah. So you'd be surprised at how much area is in the perimeter of your landscape yards. And so this site has very long side yards and also front yards. So we count our landscape areas in there in addition to the courtyard space that we have. And it's a surprising figure. It surprises me every time I work on site planning.
Okay. So then my question is for Richard. Is that really the intent of what our open space requirement is? Because that's not usable space.
We kind of look at these on a case-by-case basis. And we try to work with the developers to create as much meaningful and usable open space as possible. Even when it's not really programmed for anything, it still has kind of a purpose to create some buffering, provide some distance from neighboring uses. So again, it's just the number that just gets calculated just way based on how the buildings are situated on the lot. We don't really have a hard and fast recommendation for open space, because you really look across the street to the north, you've got a 2,600-acre open space. So there is abundant open space in the area. And again, like I said, we look at these on case-by-case basis and felt that they put, really put together all the elements that are necessary, you know, to be an adequate development as far as the parking, the buildings, and all the amenities. It's really like putting a puzzle together.
Well, and I do understand we need to evaluate them on a case-by-case basis. I just wasn't quite sure if, I want to make sure that what our requirement is, is that, I mean, there's no point in having a requirement if it really doesn't get us anything. And I'm not advocating for large open spaces either, just a meaningful open space. And I don't know, maybe not pertaining to this case particularly, but if we, if we don't, if our ordinance doesn't really address it in a way that it's, I want there to be some usable. Now, we do have this little, the pool court. So do we have any idea how big the pool court is?
One fifth. Yeah, about 8,000 square feet.
Okay.
And then we also have a small dog area as well. And there's also a larger yard at this, at the northeast corner as well, that someone could use. It is a resident, I would call it an infill site. We don't have any floodplain or anything where we could take advantage of large open spaces like you do on some properties.
Right. And I understand what we're getting here, too. You know, where there's, you know, what we're getting and what we're taking away. You know, there's a definite benefit there. So not trying to derail this one at all. Just maybe that's a discussion we need to have in the future, just to make sure that we're really meeting the intent of...
And then, Tru, this is kind of looked at as part of an urban village. You know, this is right on the edge of Crown Center, which will really be our fourth urban village in the community. We have the three along our rail stations. And so this is an area that is emerging that will be more dense and walkable. And so, you know, this, the way this one is laid out, it really complements Crown Center, which is just a few hundred feet to the east.
Okay. But we don't have any pedestrian connections?
We are still working on that.
We're working on that. All right. I'm going to leave it at that.
I have a quick question, follow-up. I think I've asked this before, but I just want to double-check and make sure. How long has that auto salvage place been in business?
It was annexed into the city, I believe, in the 80s.
So when I think about auto salvage, I think about antifreeze and oil and batteries and things like that. I'm assuming there's a site survey that will be done to make sure that it's not contaminated and there's remediation plans, if it is?
Yes, absolutely. We have already done some extensive work to check into those items and luckily have gotten the type of answers that are on the good side. Still some, a little bit of cleanup that needs to be done, but nothing that would prevent us from being able to develop residents.
Find some wood to knock on now.
Yes. I got you.
Knock on wood.
Yeah, that's right. No, that's something we definitely focus on early on. That's one of the first boxes we've got to check.
I figured you wouldn't purchase a property without doing that.
That's exactly right.
Sorry. Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Other questions? The public hearing is now open. I do have two comment cards. I have Ms. Cindy Miller, who does not wish to speak, but she is in support. Although, if you wanted to, I'd let you up here. And I also have Ms. Sharon Martinez, who also is in support of this but does not wish to speak as well. There's no other public comment. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion to second. Counsel, if you'd please vote. Motion passes unanimously. I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance.
I move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion to second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning approximately 6.74 acres of land out of the SM Hayden Survey Abstract Number 537, located at 1910 and 1914 State Highway 121 Business, from Agricultural Open Space and Light Industrial District zoning to Plan Development Multifamily III District zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the zoning amendment herein made promotes the health, safety, and general welfare of the city, providing for repealer severability, a penalty, and an effective date in declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you'd please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item E, Visitor Citizens Forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony, and speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. I do have two comments for Visitor Citizens Forum. First up, Mr. Jeff Woods.
Good evening. Jeff Woods, 1001 Forest Park Drive, Louisville, Texas. Mayor, counsel, thank you for your utmost concern regarding the problematic issue of STRs in single-family neighborhoods. I think we can all undeniably agree that there is a problem or issue in the city of Louisville surrounding metropolitan cities, the state of Texas, and the country, as well as locations across the globe, where short-term rentals have infiltrated cities such as ours. There is an insurmountable amount of data and facts that the same issues and problems plague every city where short-term rentals can be found in single-family neighborhoods. The only locations where these same issues cannot be found is where these STRs are no longer permitted in single-family neighborhoods or in areas or districts where these businesses have not been permitted at all. We're going to find STRs as a business, not in my words, but in the words of AirDNA and STR owners themselves, along with Channel 11 News in a recent interview. In an ad for AirDNA, learn how to use AirDNA as an Airbnb host, ready to build your short-term rental business. And from Channel 11 interview, they have grown their business to six short-term rental properties. An article posted on April 15th, 2022, study.com stated, "There are three key characteristics that must be met to have a business. First, businesses must be the result of individuals working together in an organized way. Second, businesses must satisfy a societal need. And third, businesses must seek to make a profit." Let me expand this one step further by what the federal government, the Internal Revenue Service, defines as a business as quoted from the IRS website, which was updated January 9th, 2023. The term trader business includes any activity carried on for the production of income from selling goods or performing services. It's a business permitted in a single-family neighborhood in the city of Louisville. The only exception is a home occupation business in accordance with the Louisville Ordinance 17-3. Home occupation shall mean a business, occupation, or profession conducted within a residential dwelling unit on a residentially zoned lot by the resident thereof, and which shall have the following characteristics. Use regulations. The activity shall employ only members of the immediate family of the resident of the dwelling unit. Two, there shall be no external evidence of occupation detectable at any lot line. Said evidence to include advertising signs, displays, smoke, dust, noise, fumes, glare, vibration, electrical disturbance, storage of materials or equipment, or traffic, or parking of vehicles in a manner evidencing the conduct of business. Said home occupation shall not have a separate entrance for the business and shall not include continual visits by the general public. Home occupations must be registered within the city of Louisville. A business, occupation, or profession conducted within a dwelling unit and which does not meet the aforementioned characteristics shall be construed to be a commercial activity and shall therefore be cause for the city to order a cease to all such activity within said dwelling unit. The city of Louisville is a home-ruled city, meaning that it has its own city charter and enforceable ordinances. Would it not be better to spend taxpayer money to enforce what is already enforceable instead of having to set a new increased budget to enforce new ordinances? Banning STRs in single-family neighborhoods because of the Texas Private Real Property Preservation Act and what could be considered as compensatory takings has also been a city concern. Let me quote Section 1.24 of the Texas Private Real Property Preservation Act. Regulatory or government actions are sometimes difficult to evaluate for takings because government may properly regulate or limit the use of private real property. Relying on its police-power, authority, and responsibility to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of its citizens. Accordingly, the government may abate public nuisances, terminate illegal activities, and establish building codes, safety standards, or sanitary requirements without creating a compensatory taking. Government may also limit the use of real property through land use planning, zone ordinances, setback requirements, and environmental regulations. Another city concern is to avoid litigation due to banning STRs in single-family neighborhoods. But let's put in perspective of what litigation would cost the city as opposed to long-term registering and enforcement costs of short-term rentals, in which many cities have taken this route but yet to have established a valid process to afford these regulations and has been ineffective at best. STR regulations and/or registration requires STR owners and investors pay hotel occupancy tax to the city, is a financial gain for the city, and allows STRs to continue to operate as they currently do with privatized profit for social risk for the STR owner. Where does these STR regulations and mandatory taxes or fees relieve current homeowners of policing these transient hotels 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, 365 days a year? Fines or citations are only given after an infraction has occurred. The source of that report can absolutely be undoubtedly attributed to the STR neighbor that witnessed the offense. It's visible that the burden remains with the neighbors impacted by STRs. These problematic issues that I speak of are not just my opinion, but rather proven historical data and fact that have afflicted numerous cities which STRs have been allowed in single-family neighborhoods. Should we be naive enough to think Louisville will be any different? The only correct answer to solve all of these problems and issues is to ban short-term rentals in single-family neighborhoods. in single-family neighborhoods. There is another effective, there is no other effective solution that will relieve all of these issues for your 130,000 constituents and the burdens of the city of Lewisville.
Thank you, Mr. Woods.
Thank you.
Next presenter, Ms. Ainsley Stelling.
I'm, I'm hoping everybody got their packet, their handout packet.
Don't think we were aware of a packet. Oh, here we go. Now we are.
Okay. Because it wouldn't do me any good to explain it if you didn't have it in front of you. Okay. Oh, I can't see. Hold on, okay. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. My name is Ainsley Stelling, and I live at 1001 Forest Park Drive. I have handouts that you have just gotten, and I wanted to make it easy for you to follow along with what I'm saying. The second page is STR facts and myths from the Texas Neighborhood Coalition website, the third page being the cited sources. My presentation is going to hit on a few of these myths and how they provide and relate to Lewisville facts. We'll start with myth one. We'll go to the third page. STRs are mom-and-pops trying to make house payments. Only one-third are run by hosts with a single listing, one-third by investors with 25-plus listings, 81% of Airbnb revenue from homes with absentee owners. If you go to the fourth page, in Lewisville, our research has found that to be less than 20%. Of all known STR owners, we excluded property management companies and LLCs as they're in real estate for profit. Owners with verifiable properties in Denton, Dallas, Collin, and Tarrant Counties, according to the appraisal districts, and hosts with multiple listings. I did not include my research tables in this for privacy purposes, but if anybody would like it, please let me know, and I'll be happy to send it to you for your, to research. If we go back to page two, and we'll look at myth three. STRs are good for cities and the economy. Costs of STRs outweigh the benefits for city residents. STRs deplete housing stock, drive up costs, and they frequently pay, fail to pay hotel taxes. If you flip back to page five, for Lewisville, STRs drive up housing costs. According to the Journal of Urban Economics Citation of Costerall's publication, a 1% increase in Airbnb listings increases rent by .0108% and housing prices by .026%. And I know this doesn't sound like much, but let's put it into a bigger perspective. Based on the STR presentation from the September 11th presented to council, there's been an 86% increase in STR listings in Lewisville from 2020 to 2023. For rental prices, this equates to an almost 1% increase. That is, Zillow states the median rental price in Lewisville is $24.15. Without STR inflation, rent would increase 24, would decrease $24.15 a month, or almost $300 a year. If we took the 26,816 renters, according to the 58% of the almost 46,000 housing units, this would save renters almost $650,000 a year, or almost 7.7 million, or a month, or 7.7 million dollars a year. For housing prices, that equates to an over 2% increase. Zillow says the median home price in Lewisville is over $402,000. Without STR inflation, home prices would decrease over $8,000. We're all feeling the effects of the national inflation rates that have skyrocketed since 2020. So needless to say, STR inflation for Lewisville is not helping financial matters for renters or recent home buyers. Go back to the second page, and I want you to look down at the very bottom. Myth eight. I can do what I want with my private property. When buying a residential neighborhood, you are subject to local zoning ordinances that forbid certain activities incompatible with residential neighborhoods. If you flip to, I think, page five, after myth three, I'm sorry if I've got my pages all backwards. Lewisville currently has six residential zoning districts. Exhibit 7.2.3-2 shows allowable uses in a residential zoning district. If I wanted to have a cemetery in my single-family residential zone district, I would be required to have a supplemental use permit for legal construction and operation. The requirement for SUP are well documented in city code and would come at great expense to homeowner, to a homeowner, to provide enough detail to elicit city support and approval. Additionally, my neighbors could weigh in either support or opposition of my SUP request. However, if I wanted to start a car repair business on my property, Section 7.2.1 says unlisted uses are not allowed. My neighborhood is not equipped to support or deal with the traffic, chemical use, machinery noise, et cetera, that comes with me starting this kind of business out of my home. Therefore, just because it is my private property doesn't mean I can do what I want with it. If I did, there could be civil or financial penalties put on me by the city because I'm in violation of zoning laws. Therefore, why are hotels allowed to operate in single-family neighborhoods without penalty? In summary, STR owners commonly throw out these myths and pretend they're facts. They bought their properties with the sole intention of making money, regardless of the negative impacts to the surrounding neighborhood or existing residents. Next time they make a statement that seems too good to be true, ask them for the evidence that supports it. Thank you.
Item F, Consent Agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a Speaker Carter e-comment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Mr. Southwell, I know that you've put here that you're available for questions. Did you intend for this to be pulled? All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Southwell serves on the Park Alliance, and he's here if you have questions or comments. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. Consent agenda passes five to nothing. Item G, Regular Hearing. Item eight, Consideration of Resolution Nominating Candidates to the Denton Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. The Denton Central Appraisal District has requested its taxing entities nominate up to five individuals to be considered to serve on the DCAD Board of Directors. Nominating resolutions are to be approved by council prior to October 15th. After all entities have made their nominations, ballots will be delivered and votes will be cast. The appraisal district will count the votes and declare the five candidates who received the largest cumulative vote totals to begin serving a new term beginning January 1st, 2024. Board members will serve a one-year term ending December 31st, 2024. The council nominated Alex Buck and Ann Pomacall for the 2021 election cycle, and both were ultimately selected to serve on the board of directors. Both Alex Buck and Ann Pomacall have indicated they are interested in being considered for nomination for the upcoming election cycle. It's recommended that the city council approve the resolution as set forth in the caption above and nominate candidates to the Denton Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. And counsel, if I could maybe give a little bit of direction, since we get a pool of votes, if we could direct staff to divide our votes, if, if you so choose to pick these two, to divide our votes evenly between these two candidates. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the resolution as set forth in the caption and nominate candidates to the Denton County Appraisal Board, District Board of Directors.
Nominate Alex and Ann?
Yes.
Okay. And would you mind adding that, split the vote in half?
And we'll split the vote in half. That's my motion.
Awesome, thank you, sir.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Are, are we good there, City Attorney? Okay. Item nine, Consideration of an Ordinance Approving and Authorizing the Issuance and Sale of the City of Lewisville Special Assessment Revenue Bonds, Series 2023, Lakeside Crossing Public Improvement District, in the approximate aggregate principal amount of $8,103,000 for public improvements in the Lakeside Crossing Public Improvement District, approving and authorizing an indenture of trust, a bond purchase agreement, a limited offering memorandum, a continuing disclosure agreement, and other agreements and documents in connection therewith, making findings with respect to the issuance of such bonds, and providing an effective date. The city council approved the Lakeside Crossing Economic Development Agreement on February 20th, 2023, and the creation of a Lakeside Crossing Public Improvement District on March 20th, 2023, to finance certain authorized public improvements that confer a special benefit to property located within the PID. The PID boundaries include approximately 25.546 acres of land to be developed to include residential and commercial uses. The city may issue bonds with a pledge of the assessments. The ordinance approves the documents necessary for the issuance and sale of the City of Lewisville Special Assessment Revenue Bonds, Series 2023, Lakeside Crossing Public Improvement District, including an indenture, indenture of trust, a bond purchase agreement, a limited offering memorandum, a continuing disclosure agreement, and any other documents in connection therewith. And it is recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. We do have Marichal Samples, our Director of Economic Development, Julie Partain, our partner with Bracewell LLP, both available for questions, and I believe Mr. Jason Hughes, our Senior Manager, Director at Hilltop Securities, to present some information on this. How are you, sir?
I'm doing well. Thank you, Mayor, Counsel. Good to be with you again tonight. You should have a one-page summary that I'll go through very briefly, just to go through the sale that we undertook today. A little bit different, obviously, from what we typically do, and I typically have a book and come to you, and I go through for your geo, your water and sewer, and there's ratings involved, things like that. That's why, again, we only have the one page tonight, because this is simply for the Public Improvement District, Lakeside Crossing. I'll go through the lien and the value first. So the total lien is $7,44,000. You'll note that that matches the amount of bonds or the bond par amount, so that's what we're asking for your approval. We have some different metrics in there, the first one being the value to lien, that's simply the amount of debt put on the property. And what we typically target is a minimum of two, all the way up to three. So two being more debt, up to three, less debt. And as you can see there on the appraised value, that's $20 million. The value to lien is almost three to one. So happy with that. That means we've got, again, less debt put on that property. The estimated value of build-out is a little over $108.2 million. As far as the bond overview, so again, we did get into the market this morning. There was a significant period of time, roughly a week to 10 days, in which the underwriter actually went out and marketed that debt and had indications of interest. So again, what we're asking for your approval tonight, final term on this, it's, these are 30-year bonds, the final true interest cost is 8.32%. Again, significantly higher than what you, the city, would finance at, but again, these are secured solely by the assessments to be levied in the PID. That's it. So again, just be very clear, there's no taxes from the city that's pledged to this, there are no water and sewer revenues, anything of that nature. These are simply PID assessment revenues that will go to repay that debt. So again, the bond par amount, $7,44,000. Everything's really structured to be self-encased, if you will, within that, so all of the debt service reserve funds, capitalized interest, all the costs associated with the PID are included in that bond issuance. And so ultimately, what the developer will net for reimbursement is $5,276,889. So again, this is a reimbursement vehicle. Said another way, the developer puts the infrastructure in, at the point in which they do that, and they have it approved, it's reviewed to make sure it meets city standards, then the dollars will go back to them solely to reimburse, again, public infrastructure. So again, no, no check is handed to them, so to speak. They have to show that they have put that public infrastructure in. And then the last thing you see there in line 14, under bond overview, those total public improvement costs are about $6.6 million. Said another way, we're not covering all of those, right? So the developer will have about $1.3 million that they will put in to the trust estate. That tax rate analysis, that's one other item that we look at as far as another metric. 65 cents or a tax rate equivalent assessment of 65 cents was the max that we could do, so we hit that exactly. And then you see there that estimated total net tax rate is about 2.39 cents, or two dollars, beg your pardon, $2.39. Just to give some context to that, typically what we're looking at is $3 to maybe $3.10 as a max, so we're certainly, again, well below that. And then the last thing there, so there's two different lot types currently contemplated, townhomes, there's approximately 201 units, and then mixed-use development, about 6.45 acres. So you can see the annual installments that would be paid. The nice thing about this is, again, these are set up to be the same for the entire 30 years, so we don't have any kind of ascending debt service or ascending payments coming from either townhome owners or mixed-use commercial and retail-type owners. So with that, that is my report. I'd certainly be happy to add any more detail as you'd like. Julie Partain, Towns Bond, or the City's Bond Counsel is here, as is Kirk McDaniel. He's with P3, that is the Towns PID Administrator, so they can certainly answer questions too as you like.
I have a quick question. This is more of a general question.
Yes, sir.
So we talk about PIDs a lot, but can you talk to us again real quickly, what is a PID? Why is it a valuable tool for a city to use, just in like three or four sentences, please?
Absolutely. So PID, Public Improvement District, is really set up to provide the vehicle in which you can reimburse a developer for public improvement, or public infrastructure cost. And so that's what we're doing here, we're able to go and issue money. It helps the developer to recoup some of those costs, it localizes their repayment to those assessment payers and not over your entire tax base.
So they're investing in the infrastructure local to that area on the expectation that should it meet all the standards required by the city, we'll reimburse at a later date, right?
Well, yes, that's correct. So they'll put that infrastructure in, and then they'll be reimbursed at a later point.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it as always.
Thank you.
Counsel, if there are no further questions, we'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance.
Move to approve the ordinance as set forth.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance approving and authorizing the issuance and the sale of the City of Lewisville's, Lewisville Special Assessment Revenue Bonds, Series 2023, Lakeside Crossing Public Improvement District, in an aggregate principal amount of $7,44,000. Approving and authorizing an indenture of trust, a bond purchase agreement, a limited offering memorandum, a continuing disclosure agreement, and other agreements and documents in connection therewith, making findings with respect to the issuance of such bonds and providing an effective date.
Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item 10, Consideration of an Ordinance of the City of Lewisville, Texas, approving a service and assessment plan and assessment role for authorized improvements within the Lakeside Crossing Public Improvement District, making a finding of special benefit to certain property in the district, levying assessments against certain property within the district, and establishing a lien on such property. Providing for payment of the assessment in accordance with Chapter 372 Texas Local Government Code as amended, providing for the method of assessment and the payment of the assessments, providing penalties and interest on delinquent assessments, providing for severability, and providing an effective date in declaring an emergency. The city council approved the Lakeside Crossing Economic Development Agreement on February 20th, 2023, and the creation of a Lakeside Crossing Public Improvement District on March 20th, 2023, to finance certain authorized public improvements that confer a special benefit to property located within the PID. The PID boundaries include approximately 25.546 acres of land to be developed to include residential and commercial uses. After a public hearing, the city may make assessments on property within the PID. The ordinance levies assessments on property within the PID and approves the service and assessment plan, which allocates the cost of certain public improvements to property within the PID, including principal, interest, and administrative costs. It's recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above, and we do have Marichal Samples, Director of Economic Development, and Julie Partain, our partner and counsel from Bracewell LLP, for questions. If there are no questions, counsel, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the motion as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the City of Lewisville, Texas, approving a service and assessment plan and assessment role for authorized improvements within the Lakeside Crossing Public Improvement District, making a finding of special benefit to certain property in the district, levying assessments against certain property within the district, and establishing a lien on such property. Providing for payment of the assessment in accordance with Chapter 372 of the Texas Local Government Code as amended, providing for the method of assessment and payment of the assessments, providing penalties and interest on delinquent assessments, providing for severability, and providing an effective date and declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item 11, Consideration of Resolution Acknowledging the 2023 Community Waste Disposal LP Cost of Service Rates and Consideration of an Ordinance Amending the Fee Schedule of the City of Lewisville by amending fees related to franchise residential solid waste and recycling services in the properties that were annexed into the city on November 15th, 2021. On November 15th, 2021, the city assumed an exclusive franchise agreement for residential solid waste collection and disposal and recyclable material collection and processing by community waste disposal. Per the agreement, the cost of service rates are to be adjusted annually by the percentage increase in the CPI for water and sewer and trash for all urban consumers, in addition to a fuel adjustment. Adjustments take effect on October 1 of each contract year. The Current Consumer Price Index for Water and Sewer and Trash for All Urban Consumers is published by the Bureau of Labor Statistics, reflects an increase of 5.8%, and the fuel adjustment reflects an increase of 6%. percent, and the fuel adjustment reflects an increase of six percent. Accordingly, community waste disposal cost of service rates will increase by eleven point eight percent effective October first, 2023. The average home having one trash cart and one recycle cart will see an increase of two dollars and sixty-nine cents on their utility bill, and it is recommended that the city council approve the resolution and ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Council, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve the resolution and ordinance as set forth.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City Council or City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the fee schedule of the City of Lewisville by amending fees related to franchise residential solid waste and recycling services in the properties that were annexed into the city on November fifteenth, 2021, providing a repealer severability and an effective date and declaring an emergency.
Council, if you'd please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item twelve, consideration of an ordinance deleting and reserving for future use Article two curfew of Chapter eight of the Lewisville City Council Code by, of the Lewisville City Code by repealing said article. Texas Legislature passed House Bill eighteen nineteen during the eighty-eighth legislative session, which prohibits a political subdivision from adopting or enforcing an order, ordinance, or other measure that imposes a curfew to regulate the movements or actions of persons younger than eighteen years of age. Chapter eight, Article two, should be removed to be compliant with state law. It's recommended that the city council adopt the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Council, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments? City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council deleting and reserving for future use Chapter eight, Article two, curfew of the Lewisville City Code in order to remove the curfew for minors, providing a repealer severability and an effective date and declaring an emergency.
Council, if you'd please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item H, reports. These are reports about items of community interest regarding which no action will be taken. Councilmember Jones, if I start with you?
No problem. No report.
All right. Councilman Meredith?
Yeah, I just want to thank all the staff and workers of the City of Lewisville. I think it was a great Western Days, I think it keeps getting better and better. Looking forward to next year. Some Lewisville public library activities for the week. Make your own mini bandbook for all ages, Tuesday through Saturday, October three through seven, eleven AM to seven PM, at the Hive. Come and go, no registration required. Introduction to Mediation and Mindfulness for Adults, Wednesday, October fourth, ten to eleven AM, Crawford Meeting Room, and registration is required. Tag Teen Advisory Group for teens age thirteen to eighteen, Thursday, October fifth, six thirty to seven thirty, at the Teen Point, second floor. No registration is required. That's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Troyer?
Yes. First of all, I want to echo what Councilmember Meredith said about Western Days, it was a tremendous event, and my wife said it was the best one that she has attended, and she doesn't do those kind of compliments very often, so, so it was very meaningful. Thank you, thank you to everyone who participated and made it, pulled it off successfully. And now, I do have some events at Lewisville Grand Theater. First of all, some performances coming up. La Ballet du Dracula, presented by Lake City's Ballet, will be on October thirteenth and fourteenth, and there will be two performances on the fourteenth. And as always, the acoustic jam takes place every Friday night, six to nine, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville. And activities going on, Garden Secrets class, Creating a Pollinator Garden, presented by Keep Lewis, Keep Lewisville Beautiful on October fifth, and an art talk, art talk by Caleb Jacks, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville on October tenth. And then Free Urban Sketching Workshop, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville on October fourteenth. There are two exhibitions going on, current, going on, first of all, Chaos and Order, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville through October twenty-first, and Off the Wall, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville, October seventh through November fourth. And that is my report.
Thank you, sir. City Attorney? City Secretary? Mr. Lukey?
No report, mayor.
Samples?
No report.
No report, mayor.
I do just have the, like, report, so we are at seventy-seven point nine percent full, which is five hundred and seventeen point one zero feet.
All right. Thank you very much. We need that rain. Nothing, nothing. Chief?
Wanted to invite everybody out this Saturday, October seventh, to the Fire Department Open House. It's been a few years since we've been able to host this event, so we're looking forward to having it. It will be at Fire Station One, which is our temporary facility, at eleven fifty McGee Lane. Not only will your Lewisville firefighters be there to explain our programs and show off our equipment, we'll have various departments and other agencies there as well. So bring your families out, the weather's going to be beautiful, ten to two this Saturday.
Thank you, chief. Chief?
National Night Out tomorrow night. Take the opportunity to get out and get to know your neighbors, and we'll be making our rounds through the community events.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Kelly?
Yeah. So want to remind everybody, we have Battle of the Badges coming up on the fourteenth, that is, I guess, coming up two Saturdays from now, right? What day is today? Saturday, next Saturday? Yeah, very good. Okay, so October fourteenth, Railroad Park, it's the twentieth anniversary. This is an invitational, fire, fire and police department from across North Texas will be competing, as well as their own, fire department and police departments will be competing against each other as well, starting at seven thirty AM, go out throughout the whole day. And I hear there's some, like, great MC talent going to be out there for, for this particular event, so be sure to check it out.
Councilmember Green?
I just wanted to expand a little bit on my appreciation for the staff and the job that, that they did this weekend with Western Days, and for days leading up to that, you know, I, I live in Old Town, so I'm walking my dog down here every day, and I have a group of Parks guys that are just near and dear to my heart, and I know they, they were working until two o'clock in the morning, and then they're up again the next morning to come out, and while everybody's having fun, they're doing the hard work and making sure everything stays clean, and I just want them to know how much they are appreciated. But it's not just them. I, we had people blocking streets. I, I did the five K Saturday morning, and we had our police officers out there, we had firefighters out there. I know they probably had a late night the night before, but they were there, blocking off the streets for the race and, and cheering us on, and, you know, I think every department has their piece of it, and they work really, really long hours, and they don't have to do that, and I just want them all, I want you all to know how much y'all are very appreciated, and the, the fruits of your labor were, were well worth it. So thank you for that, and I think that's all I had.
Thank you. City Manager?
I just wanted to echo what the other council members have already said. I actually got to see this firsthand, so I, you know, as a visitor for Western Days, and sitting upstairs and getting to go out and sit on, sit on benches and things like that, I can see all the work happening, but my daughter did a, I call it a walk-along. She had to, basically, in her cadet program, she had to shadow a police officer the entire night, and so I got to see her come home at midnight and see the physical effects on her body standing, and this is a seventeen-year-old, she was hobbling around and moaning about how hard it is to stand that long, and it's things I don't realize that our employees are doing day in and day out, because they smile when they see you, but they're going home and they're hurting. So I really appreciate of all staff, especially the folks that were on their feet the whole entire time, you guys made this happen, so I appreciate y'all.
I forgot one thing, mayor. What I didn't say was what I didn't appreciate, and that has to do with that big ball.
The Super Bowl.
The Super Bowl, yes. All joking aside, we raised, do we know how much money we raised for certain?
Right at two thousand dollars.
So that makes it worth it, but somebody brought in a ringer for the very first time for me, and he got me on the first throw, and I was not ready, so I do hear that there's possibility that it may return next year, so maybe we'll see a few more of you doing the Dunk Tank next year.
Yeah. No, I want to thank everybody and echo the, the great stuff this weekend. I actually, on Sunday, got to go to Little Elm, and they have a big Diwali event, and it's, I guess they've scheduled it, because it's, that's a holiday that moves, because it's on a lunar calendar, so it's a little bit early for Diwali, but it was, it was a great event, and all I can think of was, we got Western Days. So as much as I love my, our neighbors in Little Elm, and Diwali was a great time, Western Days was just amazing. I want to thank all the folks that were in the Dunk Tank. You all, you all really came through to help out our, our residents and to help fund Serve Lewisville, so that was awesome, thanks to the PD. And if anybody's got a good sinusitis drug, just let me know, because there's a lot of water that's still sloshing around up here. With that, I will give you guys a quick heads up, my wife and I will be dancing for the United Way, for Dancing with the Stars, it'll be coming up in January, so you'll hear more as it goes, but I have two left feet, so that will be at least a comedy show. So with that, we are done with reports, but we do have closed session tonight, so in accordance with Texas Government Code's Subchapter D, Section five fifty-one point oh seven two, Real Estate Property Acquisition, and Section five fifty-one point oh eight seven, Economic Development Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations, we will begin a closed session here on October second at eight oh four PM. All right, we are done with closed session, and with that, there is no further action to be taken on tonight's agenda, so we are adjourned, eight twenty-five PM.